Thank you, and welcome to the Wednesday, April 4, 2012, meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Donald Sikowski.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Chat Ogolewicz.
Present.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of the previous meeting? Any amendments or extensions?
I was late for the meeting, so I didn't for the whole meeting, so I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Thank you. Any amendments to the meeting? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
With two extensions. Thank you. That brings us to the next section of our agenda, which is public speak time. If there are any members of the audience who would like to come forward and speak to us about any topic that's not currently on our public hearing agenda, please do so. But when you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please. Sir, go ahead.
Hello, Mr. President and other councilors. Fran Ru, Hendrick Street. And this is how stupid I am. I'm so dumb, I don't even know I'm not the brightest bulb in the room. That's my humble attempt at a yogi joke. But this evening surely is no joking situation. I do not want to address you tonight. However, I read the Daily Hampshire Gazette this morning and feel compelled to read two short paragraphs of its editorial page for my part as one of your constituents. First, I apologize to anyone offended by words in the editorial page. Quote, "But kindness and political correctness are subtle and sometimes cruel masters. At what point does kindness, 'good job,' and political correctness," don't use the N-word or drop the F-bomb, "fly in the face of a reality that is all too obvious in an after-school environment? Educators are forced to thread such needles all the time, just like the rest of us. For those who walk the walk, the line between what is kind and what is unkind, what is smart and what is dumb, is truly a razor's edge. It is possible to carry kindness to unkind extremes, just as it is possible to carry the political correctness of social agreements to ludicrous lengths. The person who can use the word stupid is axiomatically asserting a capacity to be smart." He doesn't mean me. My own view is that being smart is better than being dumb. But it is also my view that being smart entails recognizing precisely how dumb smart can be." Secrecy in government is not something that I am comfortable with, especially if it is initiated by that government. I strongly suggest that you be very careful using executive sessions to discuss things that your constituents deserve a right to hear. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak to the city council? Please step forward, state your name and address to the podium. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tamara Smith. I live on 103 Strong Street. We're here tonight to ask some questions about the process of how we were to start the override process. We spoke with a few individuals prior to the meeting, and we have a better understanding that we don't need an official petition in order to do this, and we don't need to be part of the school committee and the superintendent in order to start this process. So now that we have that information, we will be reapproaching the city council in upcoming weeks to talk about the next steps we need to take in order to request an override specifically because of the shortage of funds for our schools. We know that every department in the city is severely under-budgeted right now, and we just want the choice as parents to decide whether or not we would be willing to use our taxpayers' dollars and increase that taxpayers' dollars to help with this deficit. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak to the city council on any matter not before the agenda? Please come forward. Counselor.
Former, Michael Tuskus, 94 West Street. I just wanted to come down today, as I had, you know, been contacted by a few people regarding the possible movement to have a recall vote for Donald Sikowski. And I wanted to just share, you know, the perspective that having, you know, been a resident of East Hampton and been participant in a couple of public initiatives, rezoning over the Aquifer and the Community Preservation Act, there are significant hurdles that citizens have to overcome, but they can overcome them, as those two votes proved. And I felt like because it's something strongly to consider, as it's an emotional strain on the city, and it's a financial one as well, especially now that the budget is, you know, particularly tight. You know, I've talked with Barbara regarding the costs, and it's no small dollar value. So I hope that, you know, these kinds of considerations are, you know, taken in when the, if you do hold an executive session tonight and you discuss, you know, the possible future of the council, that that'd be something to be given some careful thought.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to the city council and speak to us on any topic currently not on our public hearing agenda?
I'd like to second his motion.
Anyone else? Okay. That said, given the time, we'll move on to communications from elected officials and boards and committees before I let the vice president speak up. I did receive, and I hope all the other councilors received in their mailbox, this wonderful document of our new solar project, our new solar array out there on our landfill. I was going to ask the mayor if he wouldn't mind putting this up on our website, because I think this is an excellent document, showing some of the things we actually could do. That said, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. President, I get the pleasure to announce once again that East Hampton scores better than average in regional and national competitions. This was from the beginning of the end of last month, that the East Hampton Learning Foundation Jazz Ensemble placed third in its class, the 44th Annual Berkeley High School Jazz Festival in Boston earlier this month. About 200 teams participated, so again, an outstanding showing from a small group. And we had Senior Joel Turcot won the Biann's Outstanding Musician Award for what was described as his amazing efforts on the drums. So again, thank you, East Hampton, for everything this little town does that just makes notice for a city statewide and nationwide. So, thank you and congratulations. On a more serious note, we did, just before this meeting began, we got a letter from the attorney from the Daily Hampshire Gazette, sort of, I think, a continuation with their editorial today questioning going into executive meeting this afternoon. This letter will be available to the city clerk as public record if anybody would like to see it. That concludes my report.
Thank you. That said, mayor communications? No report? Thank you. Reports of standing committees? We'll get into, you know, we've got time to do a few rules and government relations. Counselor Rist.
Yes, Mr. President. We met last evening and began to work on language for our new ethics rule. We had a good start, and we will probably finalize the language at our next meeting, which will be April 17 at 6:00 p.m. in Conference Room 1. That concludes. Thank you.
Do you want to ask for an extension, given the date on this, or?
Oh, yes. I'll move for an extension. Excuse me.
How many days?
Sixty days.
Second. We have a motion on the table to extend the council ethics rule. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
No objections, no extensions? Motion passes. Does that conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
Finance.
Counselor Hagan?
There'll be four public hearings coming up shortly on finance, but I also have a couple of public hearings I want to set for next meeting. But first, if I have time, I'd like to take up an item that I mentioned to the councilors at the last meeting, and it's a matter that doesn't require a public hearing. But it's a request by the East Hampton Contributory Retirement Board to move the minimum allowance of certain retirees, those that are surviving spouses who die before retirement under option C, moving them from a minimum of $3,000 to a minimum of $6,000. And it would only affect, I believe, three individuals that have been retired for quite a while. And I know the, before we put any type of motion, I know Tina Schneider is here, and if she would like to comment on the thing, we'd be glad to.
Tina, please step forward. Please state your name for the record, though, please.
Tina Schneider, who is a retirement administrator in East Hampton. It is a benefit to a surviving spouse for an individual that's died prior to retiring, and if their option C benefit is below a certain dollar amount, then they are given the minimum of $3,000. They recently passed something with the new pension reform of the Chapter 176 of Acts of 2011 to increase that minimum to $6,000. We do have six retirees that currently receive this benefit, but only three would be eligible to receive this benefit. And I believe some of you have a list of the people that it would affect, and the total dollar amount is $4,637.52 annually. It would increase, if the vote is yes, it would increase immediately for these people. And then, moving forward, if that was to happen for anybody else that passed away prior to retirement, if they did not meet the minimum, then they knew people would be receiving the $6,000 annually.
Okay. Are there any questions for the director?
Just Tina, one, this did pass your board, it would come out of the retirement fund, so it did pass your board, I believe, on a four to zero vote.
Yes, well, we only had, yeah, we only had four board members in attendance.
Counselor?
Would any future payments be paid right out, or would it go to our unfunded liability?
I believe it, the unfunded liability, I mean, really, it would be just a drop in the bucket, because I believe it may already be incorporated in our actuarial that is actually being done as we speak. But it's such a minute amount that, in the broad spectrum of things, that it probably would hardly even put a dent in it to increase it, really.
Okay. Counselor?
Evidently, these people served this community for several years, and for what, for the little stipend they're getting of $3,000, increasing it to $6,000 in this economic time is justified in my mind. And I would like to move that a motion made tonight to pass this.
Okay. Second. Counselor, go ahead. Counselor Hagan here has a, we do have a motion. Counselor Hagan did have a, is that a motion to move the question?
Absolutely.
It is a motion to move the question. Counselor Hagan.
I'll, thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
I move that the East Hampton City Council approves the request of the East Hampton Contributory Retirement Board that the city accept a local option, increasing the minimum allowance in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 12, and Sections 29 and 30 of the Acts of Chapter 176 of 2011, increasing the minimum allowance from $3,000 annually to $6,000 annually. We'd like this effective July 1 after its filing with PERIC.
So we have a motion on the table for the aforementioned subject to increase the minimum allowance based on Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 29 and 30, the Acts of 2011. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just a quick one.
Counselor, go ahead.
What was the recommendation coming out of the committee?
It was unanimous, three to zero.
Okay.
Okay. Any other further comment?
Can we suspend the rules? I think Tina has something she'd.
We do have a motion on the table, though.
Just hold the motion. Just request that the motion be removed for the time being.
Request the motion be removed for the time being.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Yep. You have to go on that.
All those in favor of holding the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Tina, if you have something to say, please say it quickly.
I do know that, according to the PERIC memo that came out, that it says that once it is voted on by the city council, as soon as it's filed, or voted yes and filed with PERIC, that it would be immediate. It did become effective February 16, 2012, but until it's voted yes by the city council, that's when it would be effective.
Want to change your?
Sure, I will. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Sure, I, sure, I'll amend my motion. Amended motion, I move that the city, East Hampton City Council approves the request of the East Hampton Contributory Retirement Board that the city accept a local option, increasing the minimum allowance in Mass. General Law, Chapter 32, Section 12, Sections 29 and 30 of Chapter 176, the Acts of 2011, increasing the minimum allowance from $3,000 annually to $6,000 annually, effective after its filing with PERIC.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have an amended motion for the aforementioned subject to increase the minimum allowance for surviving spouses. All those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us, any objections or extensions? None, the amended motion passes. That brings us to the main motion, again, as amended. All those in favor of the main motion as amended?
Aye.
Okay. That's, any objections or extensions? Hearing none? That passes. Counselor Hagan, I'm going to ask you to continue afterward.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, what I'd like to do is hear a motion to go into public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to enter public hearing. Again, Counselor Hagan, you're up first.
First matter for public hearing, I'll do a second reading on. It's a request for an interdepartmental transfer dated February 22, 2012. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Request an amount of $200 to be transferred from the reserve fund to the Council on Aging and Longevity Fund. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to fund an earned payment not included in the budget. This was a matter that, again, it was actually the retirement board. It was, recently came to their attention that a member had been eligible for a longevity payment in FY 11 and did not receive that benefit. So this is just a housekeeping matter to pay that employee the $2,000 that they had coming due. $200, excuse me.
Thank you.
Almost gave him a raise. Sorry.
Any discussion for the counselor? Any one in the public who would like to come forward and speak on this issue? Hearing none? Counselor Hagan.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve the following interdepartmental transfer in the following appropriation. Amount requested, $200, to be transferred from the reserve fund to the Council on Aging and Longevity Fund for the purpose of funding an earned payment not included in the budget.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table to recommend approval of an interdepartmental transfer of $200 for an earned payment not included in the budget. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or extensions? None, motion passes. Counselor Hagan.
Second public hearing is an interdepartmental transfer dated March 5, 2012, requesting the following appropriation. The amount requested is $1,300 to be transferred to the Fire Department Medical Holdover Fund, to be transferred to the Fire Department Vehicle Repairs Fund for the following purpose, to provide funds for parts for engine two. I know the fire chief is here and can speak in a little greater detail, but basically, engine two has worn and damaged parts to its front suspension, and this is needed for the annual inspection. And at that point, if.
The chief would like to come forward and speak to the issue? Please state your name.
Good evening, David Mott, Fire Chief. In a recent, in maintenance down at Motor Repair, one of the city mechanics noted that the front suspension, or the springs secure to the body and some steering parts, were extremely worn and would not pass inspection in May, when it's due for its annual inspection sticker. The cost is only for parts, and city mechanics are going to do all the work. Unfortunately, this year, between the annual ladder inspection, which is done by an outside vendor, and other repairs that were done to the engine and our department pickup, it wiped out that line item. And to purchase these parts, I think the total parts are about $1,450. The remainder of that small amount, 150, I have left in my budget. The $1,300 I do not. If we, when I first brought this up to the mayor, knowing I didn't have the money in my expense budget, the only other option is to park the truck till July 1, because it will not get a sticker, it'll get a rejected sticker, and it becomes a safety issue.
Okay. Any questions for the chief or the counselor?
I just have a statement. In this dry season, as we're encompassing right about now, I want to make sure that every engine is available, so I think this is a justified expense.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from any of the councilors? Thank you, chief. Okay. Hearing none? Counselor Hagan?
Before I make a motion, this was, just that this was approved 3-0 by the finance subcommittee.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to step forward and speak to this issue? Seeing none, Counselor Hagan? Welcome to motion.
I'd like to make the following motion for an interdepartmental transfer appropriation, the amount of $1,300 to be transferred from the Fire Department Medical Holdover Fund to the Fire Department Vehicle Repairs Fund for the following purpose, to provide funds for parts for engine number two.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table for an interdepartmental transfer of $1,300 to provide funds for parts for engine number two. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions or objections? Moving on, Counselor Hagan.
Third public hearing is an interdepartmental request dated February 22, 2012, requesting the following appropriation. The request is the amount of $10,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund to, and transferred to, the Medicaid tax fund. The purpose is to offset an anticipated shortfall in the municipal Medicaid taxes.
Okay. Mike, would you like to come up and address the council?
Sure. As you know, the employers in this country pay a 1.75% tax on payroll, and the employees pay a matching 1.75% tax for Medicare insurance in their retirement. And so, there's a shortfall in the line item for that tax, driven by a couple of things, but partly by the overtime that we've been spending for the October storm and the like. And so, Melissa's asked for funds to be able to cover that anticipated shortfall.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor on this? Any questions for the counselor? Okay. Anyone from the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue? Hearing none? Counselor Hagan? I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the council approve the following appropriation. The amount, $10,000, to be transferred from the reserve fund and transferred to the Medicare tax fund. The amount requested is for the following purpose, to offset an anticipated shortfall in the municipal Medicare taxes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend approval of an interdepartmental transfer of $10,000 to offset an anticipated shortfall in municipal Medicare taxes. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor there?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or extensions? None? Motion passes. Counselor Hagan, you're up again.
Fourth public hearing is an interdepartmental transfer requesting the following appropriation. The amount requested, $30,000, would be transferred from the reserve fund, an amount of $30,000, to the Fire Overtime Fund. This was also, all these tonight have been approved 3-0 by the subcommittee. And again, I think both, either the mayor or the fire chief could speak directly to it. I don't know which one wants.
I love hearing your name, please state your name.
David Mott, Fire Chief.
Thank you.
This request is the first request that I've had to make in my just over three years as chief. I have not had the misfortune of running out of overtime. In this fiscal year, I have had, not to the extent of the police, but I've had four line-of-duty injuries. One is still ongoing since January of last year. The second was a line-of-duty motor vehicle accident. I had a firefighter injured responding to a call. He was out of work for about two months. All told, he was out for a month or two, came back to work, started having muscle spasms, went out again. The years passed, I've had either grant money or was able to move money within the Fire Department Personnel Service Budget to cover the shortfalls in this line item. This year, it's just, with the amount of money being spent for the firefighter that's out on line of duty, it's just impossible. This does not, was not impacted by the October snowstorm. That is a different line item, and the mayor returned that money back to that overtime account. This covers shift shortfalls. There has been, the number probably would have been higher. A couple of firefighters have agreed to push their vacations to after July 1. The union is going to give back four of their union leave days that they're entitled to by contract. So this number is as low and as bare bones as I can get it. As long as the dry weather continues to avoid East Hampton, and we don't have the misfortune, this should be more than enough to get me through the fiscal year.
Thank you. Any councils have any questions for the chief? Counselor?
Well, this is, this is more of asking you to make a statement to remind the citizens that they should be taking burning permits out from you, or when the burning season ends. Now that you've kind of touched, I know it's a little bit off base, but.
Sure, for you, anything. Burning ends the end of this month, however, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, I believe, is what it's called now, and DEP have been issuing red flag days. Because it's so dry, the wind, the humidity's low, so there's no open burning until we get some rain. Right now, there's a large fire in the Brimfield State Forest, which you may recall, last May was hit by a tornado. They're massing the troops throughout Western Mass right now, heading to Brimfield. So, the danger's real, it's here, just knock on wood, hasn't hit us yet.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the chief? Hearing none? Is there any member from the public who would like to come forward and speak to the council on this issue? Seeing none? Counselor Hagan?
I'll make the following motion. I make the motion that the city council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is $30,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund, transferred to the Fire Overtime Fund. The purpose of this request is to supplement the Fire Department's overtime budget.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of an interdepartmental transfer of $30,000 to supplement the Fire Department overtime budget. Any other questions, Counselor?
What does this leave in the reserve fund? We've just spent $40,000 this time around, so where are we at?
I know the motion's on the table, so we can't, but I believe both the reserve and free cash are very low. I won't say.
I'll, all right, I'll defer my question to when we get to the next, police, yeah. Then I'll ask both questions.
But I know they're both very low.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none? Counselor?
I'll make the following motion. Oh, we already made a motion, we've got to take a break.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward?
No.
Oh, we have a motion on the table. So you made a motion, I'm sorry, lost track. Let's talk about money, I lost track, I'm sorry. The, I apologize to the public. We have a motion on the table for an interdepartmental transfer of $30,000 to supplement the Fire Department overtime budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or extensions? None? Motion passes. Counselor Hagan, you're up one more time.
Okay, the final public hearing from finance is a supplemental appropriation. The supplemental appropriation is dated February 22, 2012, and is as follows. The amount requested, $111,000, to be appropriated from free cash, in that amount, $111,000, and appropriated to the police overtime fund in the amount of $96,000, and the police incentive fund in the amount of $15,000. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose, to supplement the police department overtime and incentive budgets. The mayor's here, and I'm sure the finance director would speak to Counselor Winnie's question if she's still.
Please go forward if you'd like to speak to this issue.
I apologize on behalf of Chief McMahon. He was unavoidably detained and cannot attend the meeting tonight, so I'll try to answer any questions that he might have, you might have had for him. Although, I think he's given you pretty significant written documentation to justify the expense.
Although, I think he's given you pretty significant written documentation to justify the expense. This will effectively wipe out all but about $2,600 in free cash, and there's about $7,000, I believe, left in the reserve fund. Those are numbers off the top of my head, but I think they're close. So, the Police Department had a little bit tougher luck with injured-on-duty cases in the last two fiscal years. Their problem began in the last fiscal year. There are five individuals that are affected. I think that you've gotten details about all five of those individuals. And I believe that the chief is moving forward with retirements for at least two of that group who aren't going to be able to return to work. We don't, in the foreseeable future, we don't see this problem going away. It's going to be a burden in the 13 budget as well, and I'll tell you right now that there isn't enough funding to appropriate into the 13 budget what the total will be appropriated in the 12 budget. So, that budget will begin in a difficult position, higher than in the current year prior to this appropriation, but not as high as the total amount that's going to be made available for this year. So, that department will have a tough time with overtime next year as well.
Any questions for the mayor or the counselor concerning this issue? Hearing none. Any questions from the public to, anyone here would like to come up and address the city council on this particular topic? Hearing none. Councilor Hagan?
I'll make the following motion to council. Hereby requesting the following appropriation, an amount of $111,000 to be appropriated from free cash, and appropriated to the following: Police Overtime, $96,000, and Police Incentive, $15,000. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose: to supplement the Police Department overtime and incentive budgets.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of a supplemental appropriation request for $111,000 to supplement the Police Department overtime and incentive budget. Are there any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Councilor Hagan. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you very much. For public safety, we do have a request that's been ongoing for quite a while. Residents on Chapin Street were requesting a no-parking zone at the end of Chapin Street, which is a street that comes off-street and approaches up towards the Mount Tom Reservation. We had a series of documentation from the Police Department of requests from over a period of years from the neighbor of noise and drinking, and it seems to be somewhat of an accumulation place for teenagers. There was, well, the neighborhood responded in decent numbers, requesting this no-parking area after a certain number of feet on Chapin Street. And so, we had the city engineer involved and the chief of police, who intended, anticipated to be here to speak on it, but wasn't able to be, obviously. And we did come up with a motion to create a no-parking zone a certain number of feet past the intersection with East Street, but that before I would read a motion, certainly let the public speak to it.
Thank you. If there's anyone from the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue, please do. Counselor?
You know I'm going to use that all... Oh, Michael Tiscus, 94 West Street. I was just curious if, I recall, it's been a while since I've been there, but is this area also used by recreational hikers in the Mount Tom area to park during the day?
Yes, it is used by hikers there during the day. Part of the problem is that there has, a turnaround has been created by the parking, which is actually on private people, private property.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
And so, it became an issue where not only was the noise, but it became an issue as far as private property and people, on people's property.
Property damage.
There is, you know, obviously, there's a right-of-way from the road, and Western Mass has a right-of-way that comes through there as well. It was a little confusing property figuring that out, but most of it is from the complaints as well as the, the part of that cul-de-sac actually goes on to private property was part of the issue as well.
I was just wondering if it was possible to have, like, you know, daytime hours for parking for people who might like to access Mount Tom through that route?
Yeah, that did come up. I mean, part of it, there will be, there will still be street parking. The engineer felt that the distance where the signs would be put up, there would probably be room for maybe three or four cars.
And there are already walkers, so why not walk the extra 100 feet?
So, there will be room, but they didn't want it to be a place where it would just be an assembly point of larger...
That sounds good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue? Okay. Seeing none. I do have one question for the counselor. Did the, since this is the final draft of a motion, did the residents or a resident representative have an opportunity to speak to this?
The, I read it over the phone to the resident who was in favor of it. They have been very good at attending our subcommittee meetings. It just happened that tonight was a very night for the group. She thought she would be able to make the 6:15 meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry. Would you like to speak to it, just so that I, from a, it would be nice if from the resident perspective, you could just make a comment on it?
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, though.
Carrie Southwick. I live at the end of Chapin Street, at the start of it, and we certainly don't want to deter a whole lot of people from going up to use the facilities and hike for, you know, the benefit of health and everything, but the problem is, is that there's a lot of traffic now on our little dead end, and we have a lot of kids that live on our street, and people are just going awfully fast also, which is another big issue with the parking. So, we just want to make sure that there's not a whole lot of community stuff going on up there that is illegal or whatever, that our kids are going to see. They're up there too, using the same recreational area, so...
Okay. Thank you. Is anyone else would like to, in the public, would like to speak to this issue? Okay. Seeing none? Okay. Here we go, one more.
I'm Amy Beeson.
Please state your name.
Amy Beeson, from Chapin Street also. And we did, I think, get all the people on the street, there's 14 of us, to sign a petition that said, we all pretty much agree that we would like it not to be a parking area up there, because I think we had problems with the city determining where would be the paper street that would be accessible for people to get to the reservation, and with everything being such a legal issue, if somebody got hurt on the private property that which we've tried to post, it would become an issue, and we've put signs up and they do get stolen, so it's not just all good hikers up there trying to get healthy, because we put up 15 of them and they were gone within a couple of weeks, so, you know, we just can't catch everybody. So, deterring it, and like you said, the people walking from the street, they're not the ones pocketing signs, or, you know. So, it's not that, but it is the extracurricular activity going on up there that we'd like to deter, so...
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue? Okay, I'll turn. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you. And, you know, as the public mentioned, and former Counselor Tiscus mentioned, I'm hoping this does not, you know, dissuade people who want to still go up there and hike. There will be some limited parking for hikers and such. The intent is to try to decrease, that unfortunately, that area was being misused and private property being intruded on, and then, you know, it was becoming a place for drinking and stuff. And so, unfortunately, that area was being somewhat misused. So, at that point, I will make a motion then. I move to amend Appendix...
Sorry. I just had a comment before you make a motion. I just wanted to say, this wasn't done lightly. I was on, this actually goes back to the last council, when Counselor Psychowski was chairing the Public Safety Committee and continued when, after Counselor McCoy took over, and the neighbors have come out several times. I mean, it wasn't anything we did lightly. I know a lot of work was put into it by both chairman and the engineer, you know, city engineer and the Police Department, as I said, we, it was not an easy, an easy decision to come up with. In fact, the engineer had to do several things, because it was, a lot of the documents are old as to exactly where the city line is, where the right-of-ways are for Western Mass, and I just wanted to say, this has been an ongoing thing, and I think a lot of work was put into it.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll wait till the motion's on the table. Okay?
Okay. I move to amend Appendix A Traffic Rules and Orders, Section 1-24. Parking prohibited in certain streets at all times by adding the following. Chapin Street, both sides on the easterly end of the street, from a point 1,200 feet from the intersection of East Street to the end of the developed street, said point being at the intersection of Chapin Street right-of-way lines and the westerly edge of the Western Massachusetts Electric Company easement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for the aforementioned motion to amend Appendix A concerning Chapin Street. Any further discussion on the motion?
I was just curious, and maybe one of the committee members can answer this. So, currently, right now, is there parking on Chapin Street allowed?
Yes.
On both sides?
Yes.
So, now that there's no parking here, people could potentially have people parking in front of their houses?
I'm sorry, yeah, the sign will say, "No parking past this point."
Right.
And it's to decrease parking in that created cul-de-sac.
Okay.
But there, yes, there will be, there will be allowed. So, technically, yes, people could park in front of people's houses.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Counselor McCoy?
I said it already.
We have a motion on the table. Lost my place again. Okay?
And it was seconded, too.
And it was seconded. Okay. That said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none. Motion passes. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Hagan, you were back up on your finance report.
Yep. I have just a couple of items. I'd like to move two items for a public hearing at the next council meeting. One being an interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $77,000 for school holdovers and city holdovers to the school-related active and school-related retired. I've already done first readings on these. And the second being a $40,000 interdepartmental transfer, again, transferred from Chapter 32B holdovers and liability insurance holdovers to gasoline and diesel fuel expense in the amount of $40,000. I'd just like to move those for a public hearings at the next city council meeting, which I believe will be the 18th.
Second.
Okay. We do have a motion on the table to move the aforementioned interdepartmental transfers to public hearing on the next council meeting, 6:15 in these chambers. All those in favor?
Aye.
One last thing. Next meeting of the Finance Subcommittee will be April 11th at 6:00 PM, Room 1. At that time, I, there's very little on our finance agenda, so I think it might be a good time to bring up something that Counselor Riss mentioned earlier in the session, that's a requirement of the council, is to review the salaries and stipends of elected officials and multiple-bodied members. And I think that might be a good night to have that discussion.
Right.
The next subcommittee meeting would be the next, the 11th.
Okay. Does that conclude your...
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy?
I'm happy to say we have no report. Thank you.
Counselor Winnie?
Yes, we will be having our appointment subcommittee meeting on April 18th at 5:45 in these chambers to talk about the appointment that is on the new business.
Thank you. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance subcommittee met last Wednesday, the 28th, and discussed some of the change, proposed changes to the city bike ordinances, and made some progress on that, hoping to have our next meeting next Wednesday, April 11th, 6:00 PM, at one of the downstairs rooms. That concludes my report.
What time's that meeting scheduled?
6 o'clock.
Thank you. Property. Counselor Psychowski?
No report this evening.
Okay. Thank you. New business. Counselor Winnie, could you present the question?
Yes, thank you. I move that Marshall Morrison, appointment for Marshall Morrison for ECA Plus, be moved to appointment subcommittee.
We have a motion on the table to recommend moving to the appointments, Marshall Morrison for the ECA Plus Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Counselor Derby, could you get the next one that came up today?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move the proposal to amend Exhibit A to include public health nurse position at grade nine to the ordinance subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to move to ordinance, an amendment to Exhibit A to include the public health nurse position at grade nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None? So, move. Okay, next up, what I'd like to do is speak to the matter of moving into a executive session.
Mr. President.
Yes?
Mayor.
You have the table.
I would like to offer a suggestion, given this letter we received from the Gazette, and the fact that I did mention to you last evening, I have great concern that we have adequate guidance from our city attorney on this executive session, that perhaps we should postpone the session till the next meeting, in order for him to respond in kind to this letter, to all of us. And I do believe that there is, in many instances, a reason to go into executive session when it deals with the reputation and character, et cetera, professional competence of an employee. We have done this in the past. However, we're dealing with an elected official. That's a whole nother ball of wax. And I believe also in transparency, and I want to make sure that we are on firm ground through the city attorney, that if he says yes, and I believe he has spoken to you and you feel confident that we're okay on this, I would like to see it in writing to all the counselors. And I would like to see if he still believes that we have, the reason to go into executive session is firm, that he gives us guidance on the minutes that that meeting must process, and the notes that we are allowed to take, et cetera. And I remind the counselors that there was a great deal of discussion in a recent Northampton situation on the landfill, where notes, even minor notes, and the minutes in that meeting were of great concern. I believe that we should be also cautious in this regard, because as the council knows, in this particular situation, unlike an employee where we do have a great deal of authority in reviewing an employee's tenure here in the city, we have no authority over an elected official, other than a resolution of condemnation, should we go that far. We have no authority to demand a resignation. We have no authority to demand a recall vote. We have none of that. So, I wonder if a discussion, which I'm not afraid to do in public, I want to make that perfectly clear, but I also feel that it gives us a chance in private to make statements that we're uncomfortable making in public, but maybe we shouldn't be elected officials if we're uncomfortable. That being aside, I'd like to ask the council to reconsider this executive session this evening, to get better guidance from our city attorney, and to make sure that we all are on the same page with regard to what we can actually do for this. And that's just my opinion on it, and I will vote against the executive session, should you still want to proceed. Thank you.
I actually concur with the counselor.[1734.26]